Thank you very much, and we'd like to welcome you to this special call. Board meeting for tonight, we're going to address some important issues and primary goal tonight is to alleviate any concerns that are neighbors on Crab Orchard Road behind the high schools. We're looking forward to hearing that presentation here in just a moment. At this time, I'm not sure, but please note that all board members and superintendent are present. At this time, if you would, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, if you're able, would you please stand and join me in signing the pledge to the American flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And item C is to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
You've been out of loop too long.
Yeah, Mike, where are you?
What happened?
Well, I didn't hear the chairman say, I do, I hear a motion. I always wait for the chairman's.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, Dr. Lang made the motion to adopt the agenda, do I have a second?
David's second tonight.
Is David's second? All in favor, let me know by lifting his hand. All board members were approved of it, and so our agenda has been adopted. Item two is a presentation by the Flufffield or Somerker team in that Blue Trace Creek in AGE, I believe. So gentlemen, at this time, we'll turn it over to you, and after their presentation, we'll entertain questions from our neighbors to the high school.
We appreciate the opportunity to come down and talk and engage with the neighboring property owners. I had a chance to speak with a few folks back there just a few minutes ago, told them that this is their opportunity to speak to the board, that the board knows their concerns. When we came onto the site, as I told you a few moments ago, came in, when we were hired, one of the major concerns of the board is that we need to prove upon the conditions that were left, that's the new construction, in regards to the water issues, that some of the concerns there had been expressed since the high school was originally built, and we wanted to correct those issues and ensure that whatever we do as far as the project goes, doesn't negatively impact your properties or the school's property in and of itself. So from the get-go, we've had the mindset that we're going to make it better than it was. So we hope that we can deliver on that, we engage not only utilizing Trace Creek and their experience, but we apply age and their experience in this matter. They're going to be able to share some high-level details with you about where this water comes from, how we're going to kind of mitigate some of the fact. With the project in and of itself, if you're not familiar with the work that we're doing by now, we are looking at, or we're proposing, or in the work that we're putting forward, relocating an existing parking lot to the center of the property, which means that we're going to bring up the area that was excavated down for football field. And below that football field was a retention basin that held some water against the neighboring property. We feel like by doing that and doing some drainage work that they'll speak about, will be able to immediately impact that. But beyond that, we've got some continued grass areas, we've got our playing surfaces, playing fields, and all of that retention, all the water infiltration from that, so we discussed. The world we know, the athletic complex out there, and that has been a goal of the school district. But one of the main concerns that have been an issue is what do we do with the water? So I have Dan talking about some of the issues that we came upon with the site, that we're aware of, and then we'll have Paige discuss some of the water retention that comes to play. And I want to be happy for the question about blasting, that's why we've got Trace Creek here, that they'll be able to alleviate all the big concerns regarding blasting and property, those do actually occur. So I want Dan to take off of our conditions.
So we understand that, you know, obviously water is an issue from the front, if you're talking about adjoining Avery Park, but we understand that there is a drainage swale, which, Agent G, we'll get into the specifics of how all this water can handle and the impact of water coming into these areas. But we don't see water coming down this way, there is a certain detention basin that's right here that we are going to do away with, and there's a swell that runs kind of along here that doesn't really direct water into the detention basin, it kind of more veers to the right and goes onto the jointing property. So we're going to clean that up, redirect that, that we all let water stay onto our property. But our main focus is to get away from the water discharging here, and we're going to try to push it all to the creek over here on this side. And then, so that way it comes down here and goes across, we're not going to worry about anything coming along the backside, back here, houses. Most of this over here, again, just go to the creek, we are just doing some earthwork over here that creates some flat areas, so, you know, again, that'll just drain to the creek. And then, and this is the pond that Age would explain, and what that's going to do, and how that's going to help you all. And then, we just found out a little bit more information tonight, that this area over here seems to be a little bit an issue, so what we'll do is we'll work with Age to determine how we can address some of the stormwater out front of this project as well. Again, as Brad said, we need football, baseball, softball there to support middle, or spark a lot, and that big depression will all be brought up and all stormwater will just drain effectively across the valley. No, here's with Age.
So we'll start with the... There's a sheet there.
Yeah, this one right here. You could expand on that sheet.
Which one is it, the upper left-hand corner?
Top or over?
Yes, okay.
We started looking at the water sheds, where's the stormwater coming from, you know, what kind of soil conditions are coming from that? So we've identified, and we're looking at basically everything that impacts the property that's in the corner of the two streets there, and the current stream runs through schools behind. So there's about 304 acres in this basin that crosses under, Crab Orchard Street, I think it is, crosses under here and enters the stream. There's 111 acres in this basin that actually gets, crosses under the road right there and enters into the stream. And then there's 97 acres in this detention area, in this drainage basin, that is considerably developed, subdivisions are in that. That's actually the area that we're going to focus on retaining to try to help the situation, to actually improve the situation. You've got a 36 acre basin here that drains into the sinkhole. Now, when they developed the school in the first phase, they improved the area there of the sinkhole and made it basically a detention basin. We can't calculate how much water the sinkhole takes, we know that they planned for that basin to drain into the sinkhole. There's a second 12 acre basin here that drains into the small sinkhole that's out in front of the school. Again, that basin has been improved, but it still goes into a sinkhole, so that's something that we can't calculate, the discharge from that area. You've got about seven acres that's actually across 39 there that comes down and crosses the road and enters the drainage basin just below this detention basin. All that crosses through a pipe under the drain, and under the drain and into along 39 there, and at the end of this property. So we've kind of identified all the area that drains into this property, significant area, I mean, there's, there's no question, there's a ton of water coming down that stream when, you know, when, when you get, you know, a two-inch rain or a... In this particular situation, it's about a 37-minute time of concentration, so it doesn't matter about getting 10 inches over three days, that's not what affects this situation. This situation is those summer cloudbursts where you might get four inches rain in an hour and a half. That's the situation that's critical, that's what we're looking to design for. So what we're proposing to do to help this stream situation is to basically catch all this water, we've got one, it's, what's it called, the detention basin?
Please, just got the imagery, they don't combine.
Okay. Yeah, let's see that. Yeah, this is it, this is what I'm looking for. Okay, so...
If you touch the screen.
Yeah, I got close that time. So we have about 92 acres here that has been developed, you know, and of course, it was developed before anybody had thought about stormwater detention, there's no detention basins. So instead of about 25 to 30% runoff when it was a pasture field, it probably runs off about 80, around 55 to 65%, because there's still a lot of grass in the area, but a lot of driveways and rooftops. So we estimate about 55 to 60% runoff from that. So what we're proposing to do is basically put a dam across that stream. Now, it's not a dam that's going to permanently hold water, it's only a dam that holds water when we're getting a substantial rain there. And so we're proposing to impound water here, about 5.3 million gallons of water we will catch during a severe storm, and we will hold it for six to eight hours, while the stormwater from the improvements here pass the stream. We have, we've done some preliminary calculations, and it seems that here's run the hydrogen on it. So before we build this impoundment, you're getting a discharge of, in say, the 100-year, 24-hour storm, you're getting a discharge of 281 cubic feet per second coming down this stream. Now that's seven, at cubic foot, it's about seven milk jugs, so 281 times seven, so you're getting 900 milk jugs a second thrown down that stream, so that's, you know, a lot of water. So if we, if we build our detention basin in our infrastructure that's graduated to handle each storm, so we're going to shave that down from 281 cubic feet per second to 150 cubic feet per second. So we're actually going to cut it in half. And so we are just basically holding that water, and it's not entering the stream that's entering your all's property down here, so we're holding this water back to give this increase in water time to pass. So the net effect is an improvement, actually an improvement in the situation after the fields are built. Now, these fields are going to be turf fields, a lot of them are turf fields and stuff, that actually helps a little bit because the water lands on the field, it basically goes into the system beneath the turf, and then migrates to storm drainage and out, so that kind of slows it down, because it's not like it's a paved surface where 95% runoff immediately. So that all helps, but the net effect of having the tuned-out structure is that we detain the water, the more severe the storm, the more water we let out, but obviously that's how it's acting in the, you know, without anything happening. So we will collect and hold about 5 million gallons, 5.3 million gallons in a severe storm, in the 100-year storm, and we'll hold that until all this other stormwater passes. So as far as the stream situation down here, we actually, after construction of the fields, will still be better than it was now. I hope everybody will be able to see a difference in that, but we should be able to improve the situation. Now, as far as the drainage out front, again, this drained into the sinkhole, it's hard to calculate that, so we would just have to, you know, try to catch a known storm, see what depths we get, see what kind of inflow we get. That would be the way to try to work toward that. We've identified the basins, and we know where it's going, we just can't calculate how fast it's going there, it's something we aren't capable of doing with the sinkhole situation.
I was just saying, one thing that we would work with them on is essentially looking to maybe decorate some type of water.
Yes.
Around and back there, so that Avery, because in front of that, the water shed out front, so those are all things that we're looking at.
Well, because I had this problem with the building of the school, my house is on the industry road next to it, and we had all kinds of complaints, and we wished authorities had some mistakes and this and that. The only thing that was done, at one point, the water was going under our house, so then they had built a retention wall, which kept that, but it just now burned it round to the front of our yard and goes across. And when we had those large rainfall, it goes over our driveway. It washed it just two, two or three years ago, it washed out all the topsoil, and I couldn't have. So it's just been a constant worry when you have large rainfall. I mean, we would just have a little stream that would go through, but you know, where it goes over, top of the drive, and it destroys your landscaping, it's not good.
And so, in the current, in the current situation, there's a, there's a, there's a area behind the school that actually is impacting the stream now. It's about 12 acres, the rest of the school system drains to the front, and goes underneath that last entrance, and then it's down the road ditch to the stream right along 39 there. So there's about 12 acres that goes back that way, and that detention basin that she's talking about is part of that system that they developed, trying to catch that water. So again, by us looking past the school itself and holding back a significant amount of water, I mean, you know, kind of keeping an eye on the size of the impoundment. The surface area covers 3.7 acres, so, you know, you'd have to build a detention basin that's close to two acres in size and an average depth of about nine feet to hold about the water back that we're going to hold back here. So it gives us an opportunity to cost-effectively, which these guys are all concerned about, cost-effectively detain the water to offset the increase here and to help offset the water that's coming from the other detention basins.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if I understand your issue correctly, by us slowing the water down with the dam and holding that water back, letting our water in the site down through the creek, that lower amount of water, that we're not getting all the city's water, town structures, that lower amount of water that we're holding back will be less, in fact, we certainly have to be less than what will come down, which should mean that that front stream along 39, which is competing with where it joins, is competing with it through that same structure. It should flow quicker, just in natural course, because we're holding back the water on the property. And if we look at adding additional structures in and pull the school's water from the property to the back of the property, that should also reduce that amount of water. But just by having the dam, we're slowing down the water to the rear water to get through your drainage quicker than it is competing right now, where it's, where the stream comes together, it's having to compete against everything else. It should drain faster, is that correct, in some of the ways?
So yes, I mean, obviously, whatever the flow is, it's got to go either through your bridges or around it, you know. And if your bridge is higher than the ground around it, you can't stack water up and make it go a bit older. When the water gets to the height, it's, the road's coming up to the bridge, obviously it's going to bypass the bridge and go around, so, so you can't stack it up. But again, it goes back to we are going to hold back about 5 million gallons, we're going to hold it for several hours while the rest of this water passes. So we hope to make a significant difference in that flooding. Now, you still have 300 acres on one side of the road, 190 some acres, that's still coming in, as that develops, you're going to see an increase. I mean, the more houses you get in those basins, and the don't do detention basins, you get a development in there, you're going to see more water from those areas too. We picked, the area we picked because it drains into the school board's property, it is highly developed, so you have a significant increase in runoff, which gave us enough water to be able to store. That's the question, do we have enough water to store, so that if we stop it from flowing for six hours, is it enough water to offset the increase that schools have made? We're significantly holding back more water than we're creating with the school's development. Now, if we can, and we, and we have enough surplus, if we can get the water that's going to make those sinkhole areas and bypass those and going to the front, if we can get that water to the rear some way, we're holding back enough water to offset that impact as well. Question is... Question is, is it so low that we can't get it around the back of the school? That's what we've got to look at. Uh, you can get it back there if you make it high deep enough, but you know, if you're thirty feet deep, that's not practical, we can't do that. So, that's what we've got to look at. And there's thirty-four acres that comes to that upper sinkhole. Most of it is not our water. It comes from Allison Brakes, it comes from almost up to twenty-seven. So, that thirty-four acres going that sinkhole, it's possible that we can intercept them. And the gym is going to be in that area anyway. So, there's possibility we can intercept that, maybe take it from back and get it in the system. But again, it all, uh, is relative to how deep you have to be in water with cost of that. So, this, all setting the water by catching it out, out of the development area and, and being able to pond that much water is, is by part of the cheapest way to do it. Then the rest of the work is just to get the water in the stream and raise it to all those houses. Uh, I know Ben's got a, he's got a retaining wall that's used to help create basically a channel to get the water from what was in the old basin back, back to the north, basically, kind of uphill, to get it into the stream. Also, again, we're affecting the stream, we're, we're reducing the flow of that. So, if we get water in that stream instead of coming behind us out, I think it'll be better for everyone.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about the stream. Now, there's two of them, two actual streams. I don't think one of them is constant, but the other one is, if one runs down beside your property?
It's not a stream that runs beside the property. It is when the flood, as it goes.
It, 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 it makes a stream.
It makes a stream and then.
Is there also one that comes down along the road in the stream?
Well, actually, on the other side, so the drainage flies up on the opposite side of the road.
I just wondered if the one coming down the road from the Allison Brakes is being followed the road comes down through there. There's a pipe, there's a pipe that goes under the road that's supposed to carry some of that water. Is that pipe, is it actually impeding the flow of water?
The last pipe on thirty-nine, the bottom of that watershed that's on, that's across thirty-nine, it's blocked. We can't find the outlet end of it. So, improving that could help.
But that's going to be the state because it goes over the road?
Yes, and it.
That's what I'm, that's, that was, I'm trying to figure out how the state's question to, would that help stop some of the flow of water?
Yes.
If the state would put in a larger, larger one or clean out the one existing?
Clean out the one would definitely help. Because right now, we can't find the outlet end of it. We know what the inlet is, but we don't know where the outlet is, it's completely buried.
Is it, is it somewhere close to, should it be somewhere close to where the high, uh, State Highway Department garage is?
Well, it'd be, it'll be north of it.
North of it?
Uh, north or west of it, uphill from that, but it's about probably two hundred feet. We see the inlet, but there's no outlet, it's blocked, clogged or whatever. So, it's not functioning. So, your question about all that water, it does wrap around the front of the school and then, a- after it goes through the culvert at your lower entrance there, it crosses her property, um, and then heads for the, heads for the, what we call the perennial stream, the one that runs off the path.
When I first actually, when we first had the problem, they were looking at if they could put it under the road, you know, and I heard it over where that is, nothing came back.
There, we found a hidden culvert, we didn't find the outlet.
Well, um, it's part of my property, it's not on my property, but it's on, I guess, the state. There is a huge concrete piece and I don't know why it's there. There was something that went underneath it, but you know, I have to mow what really is all the time. It was just a big concrete section. Let me send it to, to Nick to do.
Let's have a picture. This is recreation.
See, that is, that is completely a function of, they don't improve properties above, but they're improving because they have subdivision. Because that water is actually not coming from the school. I mean, it's coming from four hundred acres of school. It's subdivision above, it's got water streams still. And I have not found, there's, there's twelve acres, I will take it, there's twelve acres of the school that was basically the back actual school, that's the entry. Part of it getting worse, more houses, more dwellings, subdivisions, and we want to hire more frequent hundred year storms for now that's a problem. So, that water, we're seeing there's all of that question or people are just going to get back at you. I don't doubt that part of it, we're, we're part of it getting worse and some of that four or five acres. More houses.
It's sort of, it's sort of a burden of some people. It's a big, it's a big year, they're counting up, it's the same thing, it's up to two billion jobs. Clean like these roads. The effect of all that, and what it's, 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 it's.
Now, with the rising, with the bike drivers, you can go out there, build, make your engine, do your dirty. But this is, I think, that is, in your, you don't have to start, I agree with that. That ain't it too. And that's one reason, maybe, aside from, that's why you're having this conversation, describing all that stream, and what that you're paying. Even when you're told, not to hold back what you're holding, and become a bigger problem
Somebody's just saying.
That thing has three sixty, so wherever the noise is, it's where it's looking.
Oh, did we find that you have it at Hill here?
Right.
Not necessarily intentional, but because this has been built.
Have you got there?
This one.
That is only here, which means that we can't use this.
No.
Naturally, not much, so I was just about to.
Although one round.
One round.
About it.
Well, great.
This is.
The sound of the road.
Look at that thing.
So.
One by the.
This is just.
One by.
It's wondering more. It's going down.
Working it out to the right, right now, you're gonna have to get it on down the road.
It's a crucial reason.
He comes, actually, here, and I hear that he's a fool.
That's what it's been.
I don't know, that's all.
We have to improve.
That's a possibility.
Actually, we're taking. Sure. Hard to. They're good. It's hard to do. Change.
This is what I was.
Or the.
Oh, we did.
I don't know.
And you figure.
Like.
You're all.
Yeah. So. And you know.
I would tell you.
That's what I said. And they just. They're on the day. This is. Which is. Black. That's something. Out. Always very good. It's. Same. Sorry, thousand. Try drainage.
The sun. I'm saying. It's not one here.
You're not even speaking. So. It's. Yes. retains water. I don't know how this would. Here to here.
They're saying it goes.
So. Well. Who's. We're getting. She's. This. This.
This is.
This is. This is.
Yeah.
Uh. Yeah. Powerful. All.
It's.
Powerful. Uh.
That's our.
That's like. We. 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 Other. Others. They. Okay. There's.
I was.
That was.
But. Like the. This is football.
I'm. Yeah.
Yes.
So. Sure. Share. You. But. I have to. For.
I have stories.
Yeah. Which is. Like.
Those are next.
I have. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. The. Would you feel anything? Very. Very. Everything. Should be. While. Yeah. 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 It's. Yeah. They've. So. That's. I'm. I'm saying. Most. You want. Well, that's. I was. Order. Okay. Carry. I hope. I think. Here. Something. Once. I'm. 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 On. I don't. I don't. I'm. Yeah. So. So. Probably. I don't. And. I'm. I'm. I'm.
But if you're just. You're back.
This is. This. 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 Yep. So. Is this. It is. That. May or not. Yes. It's. Probably. It doesn't. Important.
Yes.
No.
That. No, 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 no.
And to be. You're on blast. You. You may. That. You. You might just blast it. Trenches down. Here. This. Probably. And. Obviously. Probably. Well, yeah.
Yeah. Four inches. And. This.
You. Awesome. With our. With our. Awesome.
I want this one.
Why? For. This is. Jerry. This is. Or. Right. Right.
Yeah. We're going. We're.
There'll be. I have. I have. I think. You're. All. Like. So. Ground. If. For. That's. All. This is what. Or.
Or no. That's. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
We. Do. Really. Well, that's. That's. So.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
They were.
They were. It's. Me. That. It's. It's. I try. Like. I've seen. Got like. You're.
This. Never. You.
Well, my. Plan. I'm. 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 I bet. And. I'm. You know.
This is.
I'm. 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 You. Probably. You can. Please. You. Say. You. So. Thank you. We've. Had. This.
It is.
You. So. Oh, that should. I'm. I'm. That's. I'm. And. Sorry. All right. The.
Yes.
I would say we've. A bit of. I'd say. Decrease. Just because you're really. The. They. They think of. We're. Well. But you can't. Like. So. Same with. So. Change. Things. You know. We. We. Three. Three. But it's good work session.
What?
Good work session.
Yeah. Learning something.
All right. I think. I think.
I think so. I understand. We're turning out that. I. Start thinking. His. He's always. What? It's like. I need to say. Maybe.
So that's what we said earlier. To. Solve. And. That's.
It's. Hopefully. We're going to do everything in our power. And. It's. Possible. It's. Impossible. Good day. All right.
It's. What? It's. Impossible. Or. Oh, yeah. All right.
But. It's. Impossible.
Impossible. To. Better. It may not be perfect. Okay, folks. I apologize to you that may be watching, if there is anybody watching on social media or anything. But we've had some good conversations between all our folks, with all the partners with. Clap after some car and had some interaction with folks on Crabwatch Road and across the road and everything. And one of the last things you all said to me, well, what if it don't work? And we want to assure all of you that if it doesn't work, that we're going to make every effort possible to alleviate the problem, once we get to that point. But one of our trade free partners just called me, said, it's impossible that what they're proposing won't make it better. It may not completely solve it, but we'll just have to wait till we get to. I appreciate you all coming and being here tonight and listening to the presentation. I appreciate all of you for giving your professional insight into all of these concerns that these folks have and looking at their pictures that they've shared with you all and the effects that all this has had on them. Because we want to be good neighbors and I know since the school has been built, was it ten years now?
Longer than that.
Longer than that. It's, I know it's been a problem, so thank you all for your patience and we're going to do everything we can and all our partners are going to do everything that they can to make it right. It may not be a hundred percent, but at least it's going to be better. So. So this is not the last, this is not the end. And I hope you all understand we're not going to just blow you off and after this meeting tonight and hopefully you won't be able to say to your neighbors, well, I went to that meeting and nothing happened. Because I hope to see some good results, Rob, and we appreciate so much you all being here. All right, we've had our presentation, we've had our questions and answers. Does anybody here have anything else tonight? Any parting words?
I appreciate the time that you guys put in and allow us to talk without. Cause I didn't have three minutes.
No.
That was. That was a good discussion.
Yeah.
To. Fears.
Blasting is a major concern. One of the major. Concerns. It cost me a lot of money right out of my pocket. And school being built. They'd have backhoe get in there and dig ditches, tile. Go. Last and change underground water just come up out of nowhere, maybe. I don't know if you hear. The wall there for my garage. It was basically almost running into garage before it went the other way.
Hmm.
I had water come up in places that had never been anywhere before. Inside a building, had concrete over busting bad. And I still got those problems. The towel thing. I've got that fixed. Where that one hole right there from my garage.
Hmm.
So blasting is a major concern.
Blasting?
Blasting. When you start blasting, it rocks and they're going to get rocked.
What do you think about the project, you know, proposed project? You know, the blasting was a lot closer property to where your property is, most of the blasting will be on the other side. You know, really not even houses or even close to there. Uh. Just to give you a little, you know, a little. Piece of security of the way it works, when we put the project out to video, after we receive videos, then we will have an interview with the contractors that be doing the blasting. Uh, we look at, you know, their past experience and they had issues under the projects. And then, you know, once we have worked the contract, well, the first thing we do is a pre-blast survey. I'm not sure if they did that with other projects, did they do any survey of your home or anything?
They came into pictures of the floorboards, like I said, from the middle of the house and stuff. But when I came time, when we complained, there was no pictures.
Really? Well, in this project, the minimum that we require is six hundred feet of any blasting, there'll be a pre-blast survey. It's by a third party company. They'll come to each home that's in that, in that radius. It may be slightly larger than that, but a minimum of six hundred feet. And they'll probably like put something on your door, notify you that they can't come into your house, of course, until you give them approval. I recommend you give them approval. It's your piece of security to allow them to do the survey. Once they do the survey, we request the survey. That may not happen with a project, so that we all have a copy of what was done. If there's things that you want to point out, you know, specifically, do that at that time. But it's, it's, it's a, the company that's doing this is a third party. I don't know who did the, you know, the came before, but it shouldn't be the company that's going to do the blasting. It should be somebody independent from them, which it will be on this project. Uh, another thing about this project too is the blasting will be very controlled in this area. There's a, there's a gas line that's really close to where the blasting will take us. So. Uh. I can't, you know. The other project, we're not involved in that, I don't really know what happened. Uh, but, you know, as far as this project, you will not, you know, I, I could guarantee that if you had problems that your experience, once you come in now, they would have been handled if we were been the contractors on the job. So. Uh. Questions?
We've done, we've had a lot of projects where we've blasted, you know, very, very close with it under a few of existing school buildings and not had any issues. So we write a very strict spec, they have to follow and, you know, it's, we feel very comfortable that there will be issues. And like they said, the regional gas lines, so there's a lot of blasting that is paid by the owner. Let's name the company on the gas line.
I don't.
Whoever usually comes on the gas line, they're going to dictate a lot of blasting in terms of how they're close going to be. So, I mean, it's going to be very small, controlled. I don't know about there and just.
It's actually a reference, like a micro blast, I think. It's a, uh, be very controlled blasting and, you know, I don't know who did the blasting, who the contractor was, but you can blast up to twenty-five feet away from a home. It's like. Uh, that, you know, not saying that there's contractors out there that should not be doing that, but it can be done. You know, that will be the case in this project and, you know.
They. They that I noticed lower tore up in my building. They, they, there are pictures off the wall in Moore Heights. But yet I say something about it. I go to the contractor, superintendent, supervisor of the company. I'm just taking a look.
Yeah.
And they said, well, we had a blasting for a month.
That's what we.
I mean, what do you do?
He has.
The same day you went to them and they said that?
I waited. At first said, I'm not going to do anything, I'm not going to say anything. I weed flared, a weed flared, exactly. I said, I'm going to say something. And I got to know the guy. And I go to him and he said, well, we had a blasting for a month. What do you do? Piece of paper later lets you write anything on your record.
And we were working.
I worked with them. I was. I'm playing more high, I worked with them. Then when they lived there. And his wife called him and told me that they, he told me. That there are pictures off the wall. Way in Moore Heights and that's. Four of them. From probably where they're blasting. Well, maybe not quite a quarter, but eighty-eight.
I think it says it just.
Done. Well, I could crack to my lower that way.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand it comes pretty cracked.
Yeah.
But it don't go far, you know, like it.
That, what I was calling that a pre-blast survey is to protect you from that.
Right.
For you not to, you know, for them not to have a record of that, first of all, is a major issue. Uh. Can you speak for the contractor? That will not be a situation with this project that you might be concerned about, I will tell you that. If, and I would say this, you know, we have. Same as Branson had a superintendent on the project, we'll have a superintendent project too. If, if anyone has concerns, I want you to go to that person and talk to them. And I would be more than happy to give anybody my business card, that they can call me directly. If we get in construction and you have concerns or there's something, if you feel like some issue on the project, you can call me any time. And, you know, we'll, we don't want situations like this. I mean, we will be good neighbors and, you know, can't fix what's happened over, we weren't that contracted. But we, we can give you, you know, a sense of security what happened moving forward, I can say that.
All right. Well, thank you all so much. Thank you, Clap after some for trade street in AGU. Appreciate your all's openness and understanding and sharing with these folks. Uh, this time you all are more than welcome to stay. We do have some action items to discuss tonight, so if there's nothing else, we'll move on to our action agenda. And in our action agenda, our item A is to approve fundraiser requests for the middle school, camp dick, Lancaster and paint layer.
So, all four of those schools have provided us some proposed fundraisers for the coming year. Rather than have those. Over the course of a long period of time, we've tried to condense those. We've listed for you some of the things they're doing, fall, spring pictures, yearbook, online sales, book fairs, snowy kind of ice. My recommendation is that we go ahead and approve these fundraisers for the schools for the coming year.
Thank you very much, you heard the recommendation, do I have a motion? So. Mr. make the motion, do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Um, Mr. McCary seconded, now do we have any discussion?
Um. I, I believe. That one time we had a limit on fundraisers. Does these fall under the guidelines of some of the limits, you know?
So.
It got to a point one time when I was on the board and I'm not exactly sure when that was, whether it was the first time thirty years ago or in the last eight years. But it seemed like that every school was having a fundraiser and there were a lot of fundraisers, so the board did set a limit. To kind of give an ease on a business, so they were hitting a lot of businesses in town, which is good. Businesses support our schools and they've always done a good job supporting the school. But I noticed that we do have a lot of fundraisers, but we selected the limit was like two per school.
So none of these fundraisers, none of these fundraisers involve going out to the community and asking for money. So if you look, you have fall and spring pictures, so that's internal, that happens there. The online sales is something that's internal and it could involve something similar to having a, an account set up with Kroger. So that when somebody purchases their normal groceries from Kroger, they scan a card and there's a small kickback that comes to the schools for that. The book fairs, internal, and then even snowy or cone of ice are all internal. These are not people walking out the doors to go sell a product. If something like that came up, we would certainly bring that to you and you'd have the ability to say that. Because I understand exactly what you're saying. These are school wide, so that's why they're sitting in front of you to make sure that they align with what the requirements are. And these do not fall outside the requirements of what would be a normal thing. I think most of you understand that when you were in school, you probably took school pictures. You probably bought an annual. Those are the same kinds of things that we're looking at here, so this is not into the community.
Also, most. Also, candy. Other things previously, but not lately. And it's a good thing, I mean, don't get me wrong, some, some of the businesses got hit every time, every, from every school. It got to be, where they spent quite a bit of money, because they all, all tried to support our schools, which I'm very glad that the businesses we have do support our schools.
Thank you, appreciate it.
My question.
In our stand that we're, you bringing this to us now in this special session to, so you won't have to be coming back to us.
We hope that this is it.
This is it.
We hope this is it.
All right, anybody else? All right, all in favor, let me know by lifting a hand. All board members were in favor, the fundraiser request approved. Item B is to approve director transportation request for full-time sub.
This full-time sub is a bus driver position. And I can't tell you that today we could advertise and fill the position because we may not have every bus driving position filled. But should we ever reach the point where every bus driving position is filled, we would like to allow the director of transportation to consider hiring one more person who would serve as a sub. we would like to allow the director of transportation to consider hiring one more person who would serve as a sub. Last year, the director of transportation drove a bus all the ten days. So it's not a situation where we think that you won't be needing a sub at some point in time. So this is anticipating today when we have a bus driver for every route and the possibility of having someone who would be there every day in case somebody was a abstinent. So my recommendation is that we approve this to provide a full-time substitute driver position.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Mr. McCrary made the motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Davis seconded, we have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know, but lifted in. All board members were in favor, uh, item B is approved. Item C is to approve director transportation request for monitors for pre-stu, uh, pre-stu rails.
A few years ago, the, the district made a decision to, uh, turn monitors basically into a sub position. Last year, we came to you and asked you to change that and have the monitors be employees of the district, which allowed them to have benefits. Uh, during last year, we needed to add four more positions, uh, and they served as subs. We're asking to do the same thing we did last year, convert these from being sub positions into hired positions for us. We're already paying those salaries, so it's really not an additional cost to us. But it does allow them the opportunity to have benefits if they'd like to. So my recommendation is that we approve these additional positions, they're four.
Thank you, sir. You heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Davis made the motion.
I'll second.
McCrary seconded, any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know, but lifted in. All board members were in favor, item C is approved. Item D is to approve emergency certification for Gary County High School math teacher.
So the next two positions are, um, next two items are going to be emergency certification request. We wish we weren't sitting in front of you to ask for that. Uh, most of you know the challenges that are being faced this year. Uh, we have a vacant position at the high school for a math teacher. We have an individual who has worked at the, the high school. Uh, we're actually trying to convince her to go back and get her math certification. We haven't succeeded yet. If she did that, we would have been able to do an option six. But until she chooses to do so, we still need to have her in that position. In order to do that, we need to ask that she be emergency certified. You all giving us permission to do that allows us to ask EPSB to make it happen. My recommendation is that we approve this emergency certification for a GCHS math teacher.
Mr. Hurd made the recommendation, do I have a motion?
So may.
Mr. Hurd made the motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Davis seconded, any questions or comments? Not all in favor, let me know, but lifted in. Okay, all board members were in favor, uh, item D is approved. Item E is to approve emergency certification for Lancaster, uh, elementary teacher.
Identical type of situation, uh, we have, I should have a number in front of, of me. I can't tell you, but I believe we've posted over one hundred positions this year, uh, to fill. Uh, and to say that we're at a spot where we're probably only going to have a couple of emergency certified positions is not too bad. Uh, all things considered, uh, it's, it's been a challenging summer. Our principals have done a great job of trying to make sure, uh, and again, we wish that we were asking for an option six. We cannot ask for an option six. So I'm asking, uh, and recommending that you approve emergency certification for an LES, elementary teaching position.
You heard the recommendation, do I have a motion? So may. Mr. Hurd made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lamb seconded, any questions or comments?
I think the comment would be, uh, to, to the public or to ev, to, to everyone listening and, and speaking in the community. We prefer not to have emergency certifications. But we're also very fortunate to have people in the classroom and as you're hearing on the news, there is a shortage of educators, um, nationwide and in, in Kentucky. Even though we're surrounded by a lot of universities and, and Gary County has always been very, um, blessed that we have had so many different colleges and universities to prepare teachers and our pool has been large. And I can recall years of, of folders too, like elementary positions, we had that many people interested in teaching. It's not like that now and it's not going to be like that for the next few years. So I'm very proud that we, uh, I think, and please assure us that we're going to have someone in every classroom that the school begins, even though we're having to go with emergency certifications. And I'm sure there, there may be a few that we're still interviewing and still trying to get that person.
That, and that's correct, you've identified that correctly. Uh, as of this afternoon, I think we still have two positions that have not been filled. Uh, we do have some leads and so we're hopeful. And the leads that we have on these may be certified positions, but they're, I mean, certified teachers. They would not qualify for these two positions. If they would, we would certainly look at that. Uh, but our intention is to have every position stacked. I do, I did speak to someone today in another district and they still have five positions open in an elementary school. We don't have that. Uh, if, if you approve this one, our elementaries, as of this moment, will be fully stacked. Uh, and I do say as of this moment because we had two resignations over the last ten days. Uh, and so we've handled those, you know, we've found solutions to those and we'll continue to look at those. Again, our staff has done a great job of, of making sure that they have dug through everybody that's out there. Uh, and just so you all know, we sent a large number of teachers to new teacher training at CKEC and the information that came back was, man, we're really impressed with the people that you hired. So even in a tough situation, our people have held to trying to make sure they hire the best they possibly could.
Thank you, sir.
And to further comment on that, uh, our, our administrators, our principals have begun to recruit teachers early. Mr. Stiles wanted to start at this as soon as there's an opening. So it's not like we were waiting to the last minute, uh, to be hired, uh, to hire someone. And, you know, years ago, again, emergency certifications more for special ed. And see, look what we're seeing now, regular classroom positions that we're struggling. So it's a real concern, I have a real concern. So education's good, you have people that you know and you love and encourage them to think about education. It's, it's a, it's an okay, it's an okay profession. And just, I'm proud to say that my nephew got a job Monday in, uh, Illinois, in Chicago. But he was one of those late hires too. But he's going into it and we're encouraging him. So I would encourage other people up there too. So, all right.
Plus, I'm excited about the, uh, the teacher certificate pathway, I think. Is it starting at high school?
They, they've opened the pathway. We are, uh, at the end of August, have a meeting with Western Kentucky University to see if we can develop a pathway that looks similar to what we're doing with our nursing program that could cut some time off where we actually start, uh, recruiting our own current students into the profession and try to shorten the process for them to come back and work with us. It's basically trying to create, this word won't be used, but it's like an apprenticeship. We want to try to figure out how we could have them back working as instructional assistants for two years, helping to offset the costs that they would have and then they roll into a teaching position with us. So we don't have that accomplished, but we are not sitting idly by and just saying, well, we'll see what we get. So we're trying to find ways to do that. And one of the ways that we do it is to do what Ms. Davis just said, and that's to advocate for the profession. Uh, we can't be negative about the profession. We have to, to celebrate the opportunities and, and as you said, if there's somebody out there who's interested, it's a great opportunity to have an influence on a student and changing their life. Uh, next Monday at opening day, I think you're going to see some pretty interesting things that we've put together to talk about the impact that Gary County has had over its lifetime. And we want to continue to have that. So, uh, this conversation doesn't solve anything, but it helps us think forward about what we do need to do to make sure we're trying to recruit the best possible. Uh, and, and we have a lot of people sitting in this room who've done the world of education, uh, regardless of whether it was K-12 or whether it's post-secondary, you know, whatever it happens to be. And, uh, we want to continue to have people in front of our kids who would do a great job.
And even if that's successful, as Ms. Davis said, it'll be several years forward we begin to see a beginning.
Unfortunately, it's not a quick fix.
All right, you've heard, uh, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know, but lifted in. And all board members were in favor. Item E is approved. Item M is to approve a continuation of instructional assistance for the learning academy.
So last year, partway through the year, we came to you and said, we have enough students in GCLA that we needed some support and, and instructional assistance. And we carried that through the, the end of the school year. What we're asking you to do is allow us to continue that. We're not adding another position or doing anything like that. We would just like to continue that service for our students who are participating in GCLA. So my recommendation is that you approve a continuation of that position.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
McCrary made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lamb seconded, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Did you second?
No.
All right. Mrs. Lamb?
You said it's like.
I am sorry, Ms. Davis, sir. Forgive me, forgive me. Set the record straight. Did you have a comment too, or you were just?
Other than to keep you a hard time.
Well, well, I deserve, uh, for making this now. All right, any comments? All in favor, let me know, but lifted in. All board members were in favor, item F is approved. Item G is to approve correction of extended days for family resource center assistant.
So, uh, uh, my staff had to tell me that I misspoke, uh, and so I apologize to board for that. When we ask you to approve, uh, the, the additional days for the assistants at the family resource center, I've, I've misspoke and said that it needed to match the directors and it did not. It's fewer days than that. And so I'm asking you to, uh, accept my apology and correct that so that it reflects that in the record. My recommendation is that you, uh, approve the correction of the number of extended days for the assistants for the family resource center.
So what about it, boy, you want to forgive? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Dr. Lamb made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McCrary seconded, any questions or comments?
Best to forgive the superintendent.
We'll tie it into one motion.
A little bit of both. Yeah. All in favor, let me know, but lifted in. All board members were in favor. Item H, uh, I, I'm sorry, item G is approved. Item H is to approve entry into an agreed order with the Energy and Environmental Cabinet regarding CDR wastewater treatment with a request to reduce.
Uh, so I think I've spoken to most of you about this. The wa, wastewater treatment plant at CDR has, uh, had occurrences where it's been out of compliance. And, uh, my understanding in the history is that this is not new. Uh, we've entered agreed orders previously, again, because at CDR. Uh, and I want to initially say very clearly to everyone, this is not because of a lack of effort. Uh, we have people engaging in this, trying to, to resolve this issue almost on a daily basis. Uh, this time last year, uh, the director of Buildings and Grounds, Brad Abey and I met with folks from the Energy and Environment Cabinet. We asked them to come down and look at our plant and they did. And they said, man, it looks great. That doesn't put us in compliance. Uh, and so we've had a meeting with them, uh, and entering this agreement or this agreed order means that we will create a corrective action plan that we share with them that says, this is all the things that we've done. These are all the things that we will do and this is what the timeframe looks like. Then every quarter, we have to share with them what we've accomplished, what we haven't accomplished. As part of that corrective action plan, we're going to include asking them to come down every quarter and take a look and tell us what they think we could do that we aren't doing. Uh, I've shared with you some of the issues that exist have to do with how small kids use restrooms. But another piece that I didn't share with you, and I, I had a conversation with Mr. Abey yesterday and he reminded me of this. These plants need bacteria to function and do what they're supposed to do. And if you will think about what we're doing currently in the world of COVID and the amount of disinfectant that we're throwing into the system, it's destroying that bacteria. And so the bacteria is not doing the job that it's supposed to do. So we're fighting this battle. We're supposed to keep kids safe and we're supposed to comply. And in trying to do those, we don't always accomplish both of those things. So again, we have placed an order last year for new controls for that plant and we finally received them in like May or June. And we have asked for installation of that and we're waiting on somebody to be free to do that. So we've inherited that issue. Uh, my recommendation is that we enter this agreement to keep it from becoming a legal issue because this avoids this going to their legal team and having potentially additional fines. I'm also asking you in this to allow us to negotiate this fine that they have levied. It's an eight thousand dollar fine. What we want to show is the amount of money that we've already expended in trying to address this issue and things that we are going to continue to look into, uh, to try to address. I'm going to go back to them with your permission and say they shouldn't find us at all until they take a look at everything that we've done. We believe it'll be a negotiation to get to a spot where we have an agreement with them about that amount. Uh, so I don't know that we can fully, uh, to shut that fine down, but we will do our best to drop it to a level that we feel a little more comfortable with and will continue to look into this. We've assured them that if we can call them on a daily basis to tell them what we're doing, we will. Uh, Mr. Abey and I are currently setting up a meeting with individuals who are working with us on this project to make sure that everything we say to the Energy and Environment Cabinet is accurate and that we don't leave anything out. So your permission to do this allows us to enter this agreement, uh, this agree order to address the issue and continue to work forward to try to come up with a better solution. A larger plant doesn't resolve the issue. Uh, we're not even sure that a new plant will resolve the issue. We talked to them about other options. And I would tell you that basically off the record, the only real solution is if we could ever get on a sewer line so that we didn't have any, uh, loss. And that's not something that's going to happen for us in, in the near future. So we will continue to address this as we have on a daily basis if we need to. Uh, so you've had staff who are working very, very hard to try to correct this. It's just a very challenging piece to answer. So my recommendation is to enter the agreed order with EDC and then to seek to reduce the fine from the current amount that's been levied.
Thank you, sir. You heard the recommendation, do I have a motion? So the, Mr. Hurd made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll second the motion.
Mr. McCrary seconded, but he doesn't look too sure.
Well.
So you have a comment?
This is kind of like. I've mentioned the Camp Dick sewer problem for several years that I've been on the board and the need to do some corrective action and the need to make sure we've always, that's one part of our intention, to make sure we've got, if it failed, to be able to replace it. And it seems as though it's just a recurring problem. I'm hoping that with Mr. Stiles' connections and knowing people by working in Frankfurt and working with the Department of Education will know some way to correct it because it's never anything. If this is something that you inherited, it was a problem before you ever came here. And, uh, but it is a problem, needs to be addressed because we've been out of compliance. Oh, well, we've been borderline with that sewer system for, I guess, the last eight years that I know of. And it's been a problem. We've been doing extra testing, we're doing everything that we can do as you, well, well explained. You explained it very well, what we've tried to do. But sometimes I wonder if more mandates will fix the problem or not. And that's why I've always, uh, had concerns about maybe it's going to cost us some money in the long run to fix it and it'd be quite a bit of money, but not a terrible amount, but it, they're not cheap. And I understand what you said and that may not even solve it. But I don't know what, uh, what else we could do with the Department of Education and, uh, and the, uh, the state environmental group without them giving us suggestions of what we can do and then I just really don't know what we need to do. And I, I hope that they'll give us some suggestions. I'm not, I'm hopeful, but I'm not real optimistic. So sometimes they just are, don't, don't like to come forward or something. Because if they suggest it and it doesn't work, then it might be looked at as their fault.
To your point, that's why we had said that we'd like to have corrective action plan, ask them to come down on a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
And take a look because if they are aware of something, we're happy to do that. Uh, regardless of what that would look like. We asked them to come down last year and take a look at it. We had two folks from their department, uh, Brad and I were there. Brad and I were there. We stayed with them for a long period of time and they could not give us a single suggestion. They thought it looked great. They said, there's no issue with your plant. Everything is fine. So we do think that it has Brad's reminder to me yesterday of what's going on with the disinfecting side of things and the destruction that that does to the bacteria takes away the opportunity for that plant to function in the capacity that it should. So we have to go back now and look at, do we have other avenues that we can utilize around that? A hundred percent honesty when I say this, when we started disinfecting our facilities, that was not what we looked into. We did not try to determine, was this going to have a negative impact on our wastewater treatment plants? Because at that moment, the most critical piece to do was providing the safety for the students and it will continue to be that. But then how do you start to look at balancing that? So that's going to be one of the questions that we have. How do we continue to provide a safe environment for students at the same time and not have a negative impact on waste treatment plants that we have and what water is being placed into the streams?
But I'm, I'm not an authority about any stretch, but I may have already looked at, I'm not a figure, I've been, been pretty to a lot of the things that they have looked into, but groundwater infiltration might, might do have something to do with it. I'm sure that'll be something to look at or may have already looked into. I don't think we have any choice but to do what you suggested. I think it's probably the best course right now.
I was just going to say, as you explained this to, to us, it, it wouldn't hurt to have an idea of, of where the sewer ends and how close we are to the school. And, and I had no idea, but it wouldn't hurt to go on and have some research and to know what the possibility would be for us to, to get, to get on the sewer as opposed to having a treated plant. We had one plant as well. And as Mr. Stoll was explaining to me about the bacteria, I said, this is a real world problem and we need to have, and Morgan, I'm picking on you, but I said, we'll have Morgan Brogo and her microbiology kids start doing research on how to counteract what the, uh, bacteria we have to have to be able to get this plant to work. And maybe Dr. Lamb has people at their microbiology and I'm not even sure that that's the good whatsoever. But we have a real life problem with bacteria. We don't have, we have too much of one and not enough of the another. So it seems like somebody with a really nice scientific mind could come up with, with a, with some chemicals or some, something that would help counteract what's going on in our schools. And, and it was interesting when he said that, so anyway, with how elementary students use their school and how a treatment plant works and whatever. So and he said, yeah, we may be face participating as well, I mentioned. So we, we need to be looking for answers. So I would like to just find out where the sewer ends on twenty seven.
Say it probably ends shortly outside the city limits, like.
I thought the.
That's the closest.
But it could be water lines.
It would be. All prohibited to.
And exactly.
Unless we can figure out somewhere to store or place supply of.
I'll be sure.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Because we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know, but lifted hand. All board members were in favor. Item H is approved. Item I is to approve use of Garrett County High School parking lot for, on Saturday, September the ten, twenty twenty-two, for Los Prossos, they deals, five K slash one mile per run.
So the, the request has been made. The high school is not in use. They are in favor of you all giving permission. So my recommendation is that you approve this request.
You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I do.
Ms. Davis made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McQuarrie seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know, but lifted hand. Thank you very much. All board members were in favor. Item I is approved. We spring this to item five.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
On cue. Do you have a motion by, uh, Mr. McQuarrie to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McQuarrie seconded.
I thought the motion was going to fail for lack of a second.
Nobody wants to adjourn. All in favor, let me know, but lifted hand. Thank you. Uh, we appreciate, appreciate all of you that, that joined us on social media. If anybody's still there, also those of you that might watch us a little bit later to see what's going on with, what's going on with the school system and our neighbors on Prairie Orchard Road. Hope you have a good evening. We'll see you next time.